We are going to start with Resolution One. Be it resolved that Melissa Shortino be and is hereby chosen and elected as City Clerk of the City of Utica, New York pursuant to the provisions of Section 32 of the Second Class Cities Laws for the ensuing two years. Can I have your vote? Yep. Resolution Two, President Protam, be it resolved that Joseph Beatar be and is hereby elected to as President Protam of the Common Council of the City of Utica, New York for ensuing two years. Any questions? Resolution Three, Designation of Official Newspaper, 2024-2025, be it resolved that the Daily Sentinel be and is hereby designated as the official newspaper in for the City of Utica, New York for the ensuing two years. Any questions?
No. I do have one question, though. Might not be pertaining to this. I should have picked it up. Doesn't the Majority Leader run that, but we didn't get to that point yet? Is that why you're doing the pre-meeting?
Yes. There's no rules of order.
Okay. And then the other thing, Mr. President, I'd like down the road, when we're done with this, to have a discussion about having our pre-meetings back into the caucus room like we used to have them, but I'm just, I wanted to say that before we started and I forgot to. So, thank you.
Resolution Number Four, Common Council Attorney, 2024-2025, be it resolved that Common Council of the City of Utica, New York does hereby retain Anthony J. Girmont as Council Attorney for the period of January 1st, 2024 to December 31st, 2025. Resolution Number Five, Acknowledgement of Majority and Minority Leaders, be it resolved that the Common Council of the City of Utica, New York acknowledged Robert Burmaster as Majority Leader and Mark Williamson as the Minority Leader for the ensuing two years. Resolution Number Six, be it resolved that the Common Council of the City of Utica, New York does hereby approve the rules of order. Yeah, this is the new rules of order. I'm sure that you guys all read this. Resolution Number Seven, Appointments to Urban Renewal Agency, 2024-2025. Now therefore be resolved that the Common Council of the City of Utica, New York does hereby appoint Council Member Venice Irvin, a Democrat and Council Member Joseph Beatrice Jr., a Republican. Any questions? Resolution Number Eight, Appointment to the Board of Estimate and Appointment, 2024-2025. Yep. Yeah, you guys need to fill that in right now. It didn't come up on the video last night.
Yeah, Frank, Frank, oh, or Frank, Frank.
Okay, Frank. Be it resolved that the Common Council...
Point order on that. We've always kept one Republican and one Democrat on the E and A. And Rocco, you're the Republican, and we would like to make sure there's a Democrat on that. So, my, we're gonna ask that the woman from the first board be on that. So, we'll have a vote on that as well.
I'm not really sure that Rocco's gonna be able to attend those meetings. They're at 10 o'clock in the morning, and he's a schoolteacher.
Then my suggestion would be, point of order, then my suggestion would be, he would ask either yourself or...
Councilman Beatrice, I'll be able to attend. I've already spoken with Mayor Delaney. So...
Should we vote on that?
During the meeting.
So, we nominate Frank, you guys nominate Katie, and we vote on it.
So, we need, so I'm on, but we need one Republican and one Democrat.
So, that's how, that's how we, point of order, Mr. President, that's how we...
But I don't count, so you still need one Republican and one Democrat.
Well, we've never really done it that way. I don't have an issue with it.
That's the common thing, though. There's only another one. You don't have one.
Well, could we have two? Is that an issue? I don't, I don't know. I don't know the answer on that.
There's only two main members. The second one's not even reported on that meeting. The council on the issue is one out. I don't think we...
Yep. Appointment to the Board of Estimate and Appointment, 2024-2025, be it resolved that the Common Council of the City of Utica, New York appoints Council Member Katie Ayala as the member to the Board of Estimate and Appointment for the period of January 3rd, 2024 to December But if further resolved that in the case of the absence or disability of the board member named above, Council Member Frank Kercone shall discharge the duties of the office until the member returns. Any questions?
I do have a couple of questions. Judge, can you please clarify? I'm pretty sure that they have to be two different, two different pieces, one an appointment, one's the backup appointment.
We have a backup appointment.
Right, but they should, right, shouldn't they be two different pieces?
You should split it.
We never split it, but if that's the case, we should split everything. We'll split standing committees, we'll split, now we'll split the Board of Estimate apportionment? Let me come on.
Everybody's resolution requires a 5O. There are some that require...
Right. Sure. So, they should be two separate appointments, is what I'm saying.
Well, the point is the E and A is...
That a majority will approve.
Right, and they should be two separate appointments.
And then there's an alternate. There's, there's, there's nothing that I understand, my understanding, that requires you to do anything specific other than that.
Right, but they should be two different resolutions.
There are... Was that discussed last night, by the way?
No, no. How did we have time? We had nominated Frank Kercone.
Oh, well, anyway, that's the, that's, whatever is proposed, that's what you're gonna vote on, so...
And I thought the second name isn't actually law binding, it's just a formality, so, I don't know.
We're gonna go to Resolution Number Nine, Appointment to the Board of Contract and Supply, 2024-2025. It didn't show up on the video last night, so...
Myself, Joe Beatrice.
Joe Beatrice?
Yes.
We need someone else.
I think that has an alternate, too.
Yep. So, we need one other to...
For contract and supply.
I'll do it. You wanna nominate me?
Okay, yeah, okay. Be it resolved that the Common Council of the City of Utica appoints Council Member Joe Beatrice as the member to the Board of Contract and Supply. Be it further resolved that in the case of the absence or disability of the board member named above, Council Member Katie Ayala should discharge the duties as the office until the member returns. Resolution Number 10, the current rules of order.
It's fair, right? Do you want to vote? Unless I have the Republicans' side or the Democrats' side. Right, I'm ready to do it. Don't care, right? The Democrats can hold the majority of it, and Republicans, you get the standing committee, it's totally fair. Right?
Resolution Number 11, Acknowledgement of Chairperson and Vice Chairperson of the Committee of the Hall for the Common Council of Utica, 2024-2025. Be it resolved that the Common Council of the City of Utica, New York acknowledged Jack Lamedico as the chairperson, and we need an alternate, a vice chair.
Rocco? What happened to Ted?
Utica, property to Sculpture Space, and we have two guest speakers, Joe Gerizzi and Nancy.
Yes, Mr. President, if I may, really quick.
Yes.
My name is Marina Saget. For those of you who don't know me, I'm with the Law Department, the一审的office. A couple of months ago, I got a call from Nancy Joe, the president of Chain &amp; Link Abtractor Company, and from Joe Gerizzi, he represents Sculpture Space. Sculpture Space is in the process of consolidating a few of its properties and getting it surveyed. Sculpture Space is located on Whitesboro Street and Gate Street over in West Utica, and while they were in the process of doing this, they realized there were some title issues, quite significantly. I think these title issues should have been resolved about more than 10 years ago after speaking to other older members of the Corporation Council's office, but it looks like the title issues still remain. So, what we're proposing today is for these title issues to be corrected. The City of Utica is showing up as having interests in property that really belongs to Sculpture Space. What those exact issues are, that is why I brought Nancy, the abductor, to go over them in case you guys had any questions. But like I said, I have it in two different resolutions, and the other thing is too, one of the neighbors there is Holland Pump. Same kind of thing, really, they have an interest in Sculpture Space that they really shouldn't have. So, we all held a meeting together and discussed it, discussed the map lines, discussed the survey, and came to the conclusion that the City of Utica really doesn't want this property, doesn't want to have an interest in this, really belongs to Sculpture Space, based on the reading of the deed, based on the reading of the legal description and of the survey. And in order to correct that, that is why I presented it for the council to resolve that. So, go ahead.
Is this the property on, in West Utica where they plan on building a housing project?
No.
No?
Is that correct, Joe? No, no. That is the art center, Sculpture Space.
Okay.
No, there's no...
It's not in...
Direct north.
Yes.
You're looking north.
Okay.
Utica Plumbing is there.
Okay, all right. It's over by the Polish community side, over in that area there. Okay.
Yes. So, Nancy's gonna try to explain this.
Which resolution are you looking to pick?
There's two that'll correct these title issues.
Okay.
Want me to hold anything here? This will help you build visualized what you're going over in. You want me to hold it? Sure. Yes, so, this is pointing north, so this is designated north, this map. This is a riskety street right up here, and right down here is Whitesboro Street. There's a little tiny street, is this paved? Called Gate Street? It is the social street. Gate Street. So, Utica Plumbing has an area around here, doesn't it, right there? Yes, that is how one is called. Yeah, so, that's the, this is the area that we're talking about.
So, what is the, what is the issue now? There's just people have different deeds for them, or...
I'm gonna get into that. It's, it's take, it's been a process. Okay.
It's merely, it's correcting legislation, that's what it is. Because numbers changed, and the numbers are wrong. And at some point, it was discovered the numbers were wrong because within the time distance, something changed. The maps are different, and all they're doing is asking you for permission to correct that error so everything is scope aesthetic if the person tries to sell it after. Am I correct about that?
Exactly. At 19...
Okay, that's it, that's the issue. It's really, it's really just a transitional thing for you to do. Let them correct those deeds. Thank you.
So, based on, he gave the perfect explanation, so are there any questions? I've never done anything like this before, so I'm a little nervous. I apologize. Any questions? Okay, fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We have Resolution 12, approving the peremptory deed from the City of Utica... We have Resolution Twelve, approving the con- peremptory deed from the City of Utica, whereas in 1985, the City of Utica took the following parcel for taxes, historic 3-11-6-6-D2248/311. Whereas in 1986, when the City of Utica deeded the property to the Sculpture Space, they recited the new Lot 14, however neglected to include 3-11-6-6 when listing the former city tax map lot numbers on the deed. Now therefore, be ordained that the Utica Common Council authorizes the mayor to execute a peremptory deed and other necessary documents. Resolution Number Thirteen is a correction approving the con-fermentary deed from the City of Utica. Now therefore, be ordained that the Utica Common Council authorizes the mayor to execute a con-fermentary deed and other necessary documents in order to cure this title defect. That was the main packet tonight. We have five properties tonight, sale of 1119 Stark Street, sale of 406 Blandina Street, sale of 746 J Street, sale of 135 Gold Street, sale of 1525 Staben Street, 1220 23. Is there anything else that you want to pull out of committee? Motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ayala, Burmaster, Bitar, Carcone, Irvin, Beatrice, Williamson, Classimo, Testa, Lamedico, Geruzzi, all present.
Please rise for the Pledge of Legions followed by a moment of silence for the deceased members of the common council.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, I just want to congratulate the new council, Mayor Galimi. I am confident that the council will work with mayor to continue to move this city forward. Being a former council member, I do understand somewhat of the decisions that you have to make, the stress and the hard work that you put in, and those decisions sometimes can be difficult because it impacts the residents of this city. So, just hoping that we can work together while we're on this floor. It's all right to disagree, but hopefully we do it with some professionalism and we try to treat each other with respect. Thank you. Based on the organizational meeting last night, we're going to jump to the rules of order and other legislation in the packet. Resolution number six, is there a motion to pull number six?
So, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to pull resolution number six, which is the rules of order under division two, which follow the, I don't want to say the old system, okay, because it was, it's not an old system. It was a very well put together system that was recently changed by a majority of the council that, you know, really took party politics to a whole other level. So, I sent Mayor Galimi, who was our former council president, an email asking him to send me, and I apologize that I can't talk, so bear with me in moving forward with this. So, I sent him an email in regards to the standing committee legislation and the rules of order that he had before. So, this is an email that he sent in January, January 21st, 2020. It says, "Council, please see the attached 2020-21 designated council committee rules." And I said, everybody's got a copy of this on their desk. So, it says, "The names have been adjusted more than the committee to serve the current state of the city as well as the needs of the council and the community. The number of committee members has also been adjusted, has also been adjusted. Each committee now has five members. While past councils have seen this as a risk, it is not. Committee meetings are scheduled as such. Their agenda is to deal with general inquiry and/or processing of legislation. Committees cannot take legislative action and can only vote on actions for recommendations and report to the council, as well as the development of legislation if the need of the council shall rise. Or district issues, as well as council member interests, experience, and prior actions were taken into account when developing the committee assignments. I will issue a full length of descriptions for each committee over the next few days. For the purpose of this email, I will focus on the adjustment to the names and reason to the change." And it goes to list each of the committees, which included public safety, codes, economic development, so on and so forth. As always, legislation may be placed in the committee of the whole. It says, "Please note and recognize that for the past four years, committees have been inherently transparent under my direction, and all meetings were announced to the full council, special council, special council to the council, the public, and the press. All legislation that was proposed was placed in committee in an efficient manner." Now, what the new committee system does is it eliminates those standing committees. And I want to, I want to read each of those committees and who their member, how their membership was with their party. membership was with their party affiliation next to it. So, for the Public Works and Transportation Committee, you had Joe Beatrice, who was a Republican, Celeste Friend, Democrat, Jack La Medico, Democrat, Mark Williamson, Republican, Frank Miola, Democrat, held the majority. However, those, even in this committee system, that majority still had the choice to make a recommendation to the full body. The new committee system now can still hold five members of this council responsible of one political party to keep and withhold legislation as it had the past two years in this council. And that goes from Complete Streets Project to a number other proposal that this council only seen five minutes before was supposed to be voted on. Now, I'm going to move on. Parks, Youth, Recreation, Veterans, and Seniors. Mark Williamson, Republican, Maria McNeil, Democrat, Frank Miola, Democrat, Celeste Friend, Democrat, Joe Beatrice, Republican. That's two out of the two committees with the majority of Democrats holding those, holding that power. Number three, Public Safety, City Code, and Charter. Frank DeBrego, Democrat, Delva Moody, Democrat, Jack Williamson, Democrat, Mark Williamson, Republican, Bob Bur, Bob Burmaster, Democrat. Codes, Neighborhood Preservation, and MHA. Delva Moody, Democrat, Bob Burmaster, Democrat, Maria McNeil, Democrat, Frank DeBrego, Democrat, Celeste Friend, Democrat. Finance, Frank Miola, Democrat, Mark Williamson, Republican, Bob Burmaster, Democrat, Frank, Frank DeBrego, Democrat, Jack La Medico, Democrat. Economic and Development, Jack La Medico, Democrat, Maria McNeil, Democrat, Bob Burmaster, Democrat, Joe Beatrice, Republican, Delva Moody, Democrat. Government Relations, Maria McNeil, Democrat, Celeste Friend, Democrat, Frank Miola, Democrat, Delva Moody, Democrat, Joe Beatrice, Republican. Now, with that said, okay, even with this new change, they wanted to go to a committee of the whole system. In the ten years I was on the council under the old standing committee and the rules of order, this body would have pieces of legislation that would come in front of us, whether it had to do with an award issue or an entire city issue. So, for example, we would get legislation in regards to the hospital. The council president would assign that to a committee. The council would decide as a body whether or not we wanted to keep it in an individual committee or bring it out as a committee of the whole. A majority of times, if legislation was pressing that to a specific committee, us as a council, and it specifically states in the email that he sent to them, always, as always, legislation may also be placed in the committee of the whole. Never once, and even when I was on the council, as a seven to two majority of Democrat, of Democrats and the two Republicans that were on the council, have we ever come to the point where party politics have played such a manner in this legislative body. And it's infuriating to me that I have to continue to sit here and fight to try and give an even say to just the process. It's not about people, it's not about individuals, it is about process, okay? And I have pleaded with members on this council now, this is going on my second term under these rules, to go back to that, to go back to the way that gave everybody the chance, including the legislative process, moving forward within the city. So, again, the only thing that I will say that has changed is the new rules of order only make it so that a majority of a party affiliation can keep legislation in committee and not give a proper, not give a proper say to the rest of the council. And I find that horrifying, no matter which way, whether we had a Republican mayor, Democrat mayor, a Republican council, Democrat council. And I find it interesting that even, you know, some of the members in, on this council that have said before, former Councilman Miola, who was the council president at the time, managed the common council under the Standing Committee Order of Business. And then, when he came on the council, switched it. It's infuriating and it's shameful. And I really feel bad for people who start this year off, you know, really not given a fair shot under a new administration to follow the rules that are governed by every legislative body in the entire country except the city of Utica. I'm definitely not going to be able to talk tomorrow, so I apologize and I thank you for giving me the, giving me the floor.
You're welcome.
Point of order, may I have something to say?
Yes, Councilman.
Thank you, Councilman Testa, I appreciate your opinion. I'm going to be voting for the old rules of order, the way we had it before as of last year. And let me give you a reason why I'm, why I would like to do this. Mary Ann Bunshon's calling me, excuse me, I'll have to call her later. But anyways, I think that the old rules of order that I'm going to, again, vote for this year is the fairest way to do it. We come in here, we all sit in front of the committee here, I can't talk right now. We're all sitting in front of the committee here, and everything that is brought to the committee is brought in front of the audience right here. If you want to look at how the county does it, there's over 20 people on the county legislator. Well, you can't have everybody, all 29 people or 27 people on one committee. We only have nine people on this council right now. That's more than enough for a committee of the whole. Anything that comes down, any legislation that comes down, it comes down to everybody on this committee, and it comes down to the people in the audience here who would like to come and listen to anything, legislation coming down on the committee. It doesn't get pigeonholed into a committee where it could get buried in a back room, and we never see that again. Everybody here is quite aware of what the legislation is. Everybody here on the committee of the whole, not just two or three people that are on a committee in the back room, could ask questions and listen to it. Everybody on the committee a whole could vote on that legislation before we bring it forward, not like it was in the position that they're bringing forward. Another thing that I'd like to mention right now is that there's no longer a supermajority on this council. If we pass something five to four, the mayor can veto it. If the mayor passes something in his office, we all sit down here as a whole, and hopefully we're following his vision, and we could pass it here, and we're going to pass it in front of everybody, and it's not going to be backroom politics like happens sometimes when you have a division and only certain people are on that particular committee. So, I think that, I think that it's fair that we do everything in the room here, in front of the, in front of the audience, in front of all nine members of this committee, so we could sit down and discuss it. If there's times where we'd like to put it into committee and hold it, and to bring guests in to speak on it, fair and well, because I'm going to be in charge of this committee of the whole if I'm voted in today, and I'll make sure it's done right, and I'll make sure it's done fair, and I will let everybody on this council say their piece. And if it has to go to another meeting, I will be more than happy to bring it to the next meeting. So, there's nothing unfair about committee of the whole. I am going to make sure that nothing gets forced down our throats like possibly might have happened in another administration. I'm spoken, I will make sure that it is done fair. I've given my word to the people on this council. So, I will be voting for number 10, the old committee of the whole, and that's what it is, and I hope my fellow council people will vote with me on this. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Councilman. Is there any more discussion? I need a second. Are you ready for a vote?
Six nays defeated.
We're going, we're going to go to Resolution Number 10, Current Rules of Order, a motion to pull Resolution Number 10.
I'd like to bring that forward.
Ready for your vote?
Number 10, the current rules.
The current rules.
Thank you. So, what's up? Are we voting?
Your votes, please.
Wait, this is for Sam's?
This is for the current.
Okay, clear the board. Doc Mark said he voted the wrong way. He voted the wrong way on Sam's.
I thought those number 10 coming out.
Yes.
What you meant?
It was number six, which was the new rules.
Could you change his vote on that, that he voted yes on the, on number six?
We revote.
Okay, well, we vote on number six.
We'll have a revote for number six, Resolution Six.
Which I'll be voting no.
I guess we're going to clear the vote on that.
We just, we just started.
Are we voting no?
Yes.
Yeah, vote.
Six nays defeated.
Resolution Number 10, Current Rules of Order, a motion to pull Resolution Number 10.
I would like to move that resolution.
Can you vote, please?
Switch to number four. Five, four. Break switch to vote. No, because it's very confusing when you say yes, you're approving, you're no.
Can you just do five, four, number 10, vote votes.
Is this correct on the board?
No.
Okay, so let's do it again.
This is, this is for number 10.
This is for the current, this, this is for the current rules, which is number 10, Resolution Number 10.
That one is no, one is yes.
City Clerk, 2024, 2025, be it resolved that Melissa Shortino be and hereby chosen and elected as City Clerk of the City of Utica, New York pursuant to the provisions of Section 32 of the Second Class Cities Law for the ensuing two years. Can I have your vote? Need a motion?
I'll make a motion. Second.
Can I have your vote?
Nine nays adopted. Thank you. Thank you.
Resolution Number Two. President Pro temp, 2024, 2025, be it resolved that Joseph Bittar be and is hereby elected as President Pro temp of the Common Council of the City of Utica, New York for the ensuing two years.
I'd like to make that.
Can I have a motion? Can I have your vote? Resolution Number Three.
Make a motion.
Designation of official newspaper. Do you have a second?
Thank you.
Designation of official newspaper, 2024, 2025, be it resolved that the Daily Sentinel be and hereby designated as the official newspaper in and for the City of Utica, New York for the ensuing two years. Votes, please.
Nine nays adopted.
Resolution Number Four, can I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Common Council Attorney, 2024, 2025, be it resolved that the Common Council of the City of Utica does hereby retain Anthony J. Girmont as Council Attorney for the period of January 1st, 2024 to December 31st, 2025. Your votes, please.
Nine nays adopted.
Resolution Number Five, motion?
May I say thank you?
Go ahead.
I'd like to thank you for your confidence, and I promise that Mr. Giorgio and the department heads and I will cooperate with all of you, and I'm always at your disposal. And we'll do it the right way, and I have a feeling we're going to have a very successful two years, because I think the mayor and this council are going to get along very well. Thank you.
Motion for Resolution Number Five?
I'll move it. Second.
Acknowledgement of Majority and Minority Leaders, 2024, 2025, be it resolved that the Common Council of City of Utica acknowledges Robert Burmaster as Majority Leader and Mark Williamson as Minority Leader for the ensuing two years. Your votes, please. Resolution Number Seven, motion?
I'll make a motion.
Majority and minority appointments to Urban Renewal Agency, 2024, 2025, whereas pursuant of Section 616, the General Municipal Law of the State of New York, the Utica Urban Renewal Agency was duly established for the accomplishment of any or all purposes specified in Articles 15 and 15A, said the General Municipal Law. Whereas pursuant of Section 616 of the general law, the agency is to consist of seven members, two members of which are to be members of the common council appointed by the council who should be not be members of the same political party, and each of whom shall reserve, serve until the expiration of their term of office as council member. Now, therefore be it resolved that the common council of the City of Utica does hereby appoint council member Venice Irvin, a Democrat, and council member Joseph Beatrice Jr., a Republican, to serve as the common council members of the Urban Renewal Agency to the provisions of Section 616. Be it further resolved that pursuant said, to said law, each of the appointees should serve until the expiration of their term.
Nine nays adopted.
Motion for Resolution Number Eight?
I'll move it.
Appointment to the Board of Estimate and Appointment. We need a second.
Thank you.
Be it resolved that the common council of the City of Utica of New York appoints council member Katie Ayala, Katie Ayala is a member of the Board of Estimate and Appointment for the period of January 3rd, 2024 to December 31st, 2025. Be it further resolved that in case of the absence or disability of the board members named above, council member Frank Carcone shall discharge the duties of the office until the member returns. Can I have your votes, please?
Seven yeas adopted.
A motion for Resolution Number Nine. Appointment to the Board of Contract and Supply, 2024, 2025.
Want to get a second on that? I'll second.
Yep.
That's wrong.
What's that?
Joe Beatrice was supposed to be contract supplier, right?
Yeah, we have that. Be it resolved that the common council of the City of Utica appoints council member Joseph Beatrice as the member of Board of Contract and Supply for the period of January 3rd, 2024 to December 31st, 2025. Be it further resolved that in case of the absence or disability of the board member named above, council member Katie Ayala shall discharge the duties of the office until the member returns. Can I have your votes, please?
Eight yeas adopted.
Resolution Number 11, motion?
Second.
Second.
Acknowledgement of Chairperson and Vice Chairperson of the Committee of the Whole for the Common Council of Utica, 2024, 2025. Be it resolved that the common council of the City of Utica acknowledges Jack La Medico as Chairperson, Mark Williamson as Vice Chairperson of the Committee of the Whole for the ensuing two years. Can I have your votes, please?
Eight yeas adopted.
Have a motion to pull Resolution Number 12?
I'll move it. I'll second.
A resolution improvement confirmatory deed from the City of Utica, whereas in 1985, the City of Utica took the following parcel for taxes, historic 3-11-6-6D2248-311. Yep. Whereas- Yep, whereas Utica Urban Renewal conveyed to the Holland Pump and Supply Company an instrument number two thousand two dash zero two nine eight zero nine, the same premises, and now therefore be it resolved that the Utica Common Council authorizes the mayor to execute a confirmatory deed and other necessary documents in order to cure this title defect. Can I have your votes, please?
Nine yeas adopted.
Resolution for number thirteen, a motion? The resolution approving confirmatory deed from the City of Utica. Utica Urban Renewal conveyed the Holland Pump and Supply Company Incorporated an instrument number two thousand two zero two nine eight zero nine, the same premises, and now therefore be it resolved that the Utica Common Council authorizes the mayor to execute a confirmatory deed and other necessary documents in order to cure this title defect. Okay, have your votes, please.
Nine yeas adopted.
We're gonna jump back to the regular meeting. Does the chair hear a motion and a second to dispense the reading of minutes from the previous meeting?
Make a motion. I'll second it.
The minutes were posted on ECO three sixty for council and public to view. We have public hearings tonight on the following properties, the sale of eleven nineteen Stark Street, the sale of four oh six Blan-Dynast Street, sale of seven forty-six J Street, sale of one thirty-five Gold Street, sale of fifteen twenty-five Stubein Street. Are there people signed up to speak? Nope. No people. There's no communication from the mayor? Report of city officers. We have Chief Angersell, Fire Chief Angersell, anything to report?
No, congratulations to the new council people and I look forward to working with you all for the next few years.
We had Chief Noonan.
I'm here for him.
Lieutenant Bro.
Lieutenant Bro, yes.
Yep, Lieutenant Bro.
The Utica Police Department wants to congratulate all the new council members, Common Council President, Mayor, City Clerk, Council Attorney, wish them a happy and prosperous new year. Also, want to mention the Bank of Utica New Year's Eve event was a safe and successful night. Special thanks to Captain James Holt who planned the event and did a good job with that.
Thank you. Marcus Phillips, Codes?
I think I just welcome the new council members and the new old faces, Councilman Lamedico and Council President Duritz, it's good to see you guys all here. I'm the Codes Commissioner, name is Marcus Phillips. Each one of you has a Codes Officer assigned to your respective district. If you have any questions about Codes, don't hesitate to call. Sometimes council people have felt like they were bothering us in the past, but you couldn't possibly bother me because you're helping me do my job when you call. So if you have questions, if you, if you have Codes issues, you know, I answer my cell phone all times a day, so please don't hesitate to call. Also want to join in congratulating everybody on their victories in getting elected, even Councilperson Beatrice and Councilperson Ayala. You guys ran on a post, so I'm a little less impressed, but I'll congratulate nonetheless, okay?
Thank you, Marcus. Chief Gentile?
It's been a fun two days, three days, counting the swearing in, so looking forward to working with you guys. Congratulations on your victories. I'm just as impressed with the people that run on a post. That means you were so intimidating from the start. But yeah, we're just, we're ready to get to work, continue to do some good work, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Our new HR Director, Megan Scott?
Hi, I'm, just want to congratulate everybody and I'm really excited to work with all of you.
Thank you, Megan. Corporation Council, Stephanie DiGiorgio?
I would just echo the sentiments that were said earlier, congratulations everyone, look forward to a new council year.
Thank you, Stephanie, and our new mayor, Mr. Michael Gleme.
Thank you. I'd like to thank everybody in the room for continuing your attention to the Common Council. I'd like to congratulate this council in coming together, organizing, meeting tonight after yesterday's meeting. I'd like to thank the new Chief of Staff, Mike Gentile, the last two days, and likewise our new HR Director as well as everyone else, but they're the newest faces, you know, in the room and it's really good to see truly fresh start for the city. Looking forward to working with the council and just doing the business that will keep our city prosperous, the people moving in the right direction, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So we have four people signed up for a public comment period. First one is Stephanie R., Stefan R. Stefan, can you come up to the front? Stefan, Common Council has approved you a copy of section three dash two forty-four, public comment period. Are you in agreement with the rule?
Yes.
Please state your name.
Stefan Rubitsky. Birthday twelve eight nineteen seventy-eight, forty-five years old.
You may begin, Stefan, very good, and you got, you have three minutes.
Happy New Year, everyone, and for the council people and for the mayor and for the city, let's work together, let's work on fixing the crime within the city and let's work with the police department, the mayor and the council and the fire department and everyone to fix the crime in the city. It is a problem and it needs to be fixed and let's all work together to fix this and hopefully things will get better in that area, thank you.
Thank you, Stefan. Our next speaker is Todd McCarthy, I think. Todd, the Common Council has provided you a copy of section three dash two forty-four, public comment period. Are you in agreement with the rule?
Yes.
Please state your name.
Todd Christopher McCarthy.
You may begin, you have three minutes, Todd.
Good evening, everyone, as you may know, I'm Todd McCarthy. I dedicate my significant portion of my weeks at NBCC Volunteering. And, sorry, I worked in the C three program in the, I worked in a C three program in the Learning Commons and I, as, as we convene for Utica's first official City Council meeting of two thousand twenty-four, I want to express my commitment to actively participating in the gatherings throughout the year and I approach the discussions with a focused, sustained attitude to debate, debates, I mean, and develop personal biases or emotions in making decisions for our country. I believe that it is imperative for each politician regardless of party affiliation or to conduct the research or drawing from multiple reliable sources seasoned with a decent common sense and reasoning. It is essential opinions and purposes differ from, or may be seen similar, but it is crucial to distinguish from them, for instance, black is, is, may some may find black is their favorite color, so they think it's a great color, but if we paint, if, with the majority of, if the walls needed to be painted a different, a new color and there was three permanent, there are three colors to be painted and the majority of the, the color that would be voted, if it somehow would be black, that would be a problem because it would become a fact, however, we should be aware that black predominantly absorbs our colors of, of the visual magnetic spectrum of magnetic radiation, making it hard to see. Furthermore, I urge everyone to be well-prepared and do not dismiss proposals outright as the questions like why in upgrading computers and security system shouldn't be met with a simple response, why does it, it's costly and why is it so expensive? Instead, we should, in the, would technically constantly evolve with, so do cyber threats. The key to delve into reason and understand the necessary point in assessment. Regardless of your political stance of, what matters to me is the choice made we fight with these listed qualifications, my commitment extends beyond this room. And it reflects in how I testify on weight those social media platforms and such forth in my support. If it's not, if it's not, if it doesn't meet with those requirements, I would no longer, yes, I no longer have my vote in the City Commons Council or my vote, our support in my, as my, as the years unfold. As we embark on this new year.
Todd, finish up, please, Todd.
To positive outcomes and thank you and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. Our next speaker, Lindsey Bonanza. Lindsey, the Common Council has provided you a copy of section three dash two forty-four, public comment period. Are you in agreement with the rule?
Yes.
Please state your name.
Lindsey Bonanza.
Thank you, Lindsey.
Good evening, it's been a few years since I have not only wanted to speak to this council, but it's also been a few years since I felt anyone would listen to my words. As a twenty-five-year-plus Utican, it's sad that I've had such little faith in this council in recent years. As some of you know, I was sadly unaware of the power this council held until my neighborhood fell victim to the reckless and unchecked actions of this council back in two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. Even with an alarming amount of proof, resident interaction and full admittance of wrongdoing by Judge Guermont, the former council, which some of you sat on, still failed myself and my neighbors when it came to the Kelberman Center project in my neighborhood, which again, had everything to do with the process, not the mission. So why am I here today? I'm here with a renewed sense of hope in my heart that with the new mayor and new additions to this council, the tax-paying residents will be put back on the top of the list of priorities for the city. For the last twelve years, non-residents, millionaires and family legacies somehow came before the folks who live here, raise families here, and more importantly, pay taxes here. While outside agents and transient renters may be able to secure votes in this city, their voices should not be louder than the people who pay the taxes to keep the city up and running. Sadly, former councils felt those people were more important than the taxpayers. All residents should matter, not one sat over another. The former councils have made poor decisions for their constituents, voted only with party lines, and in some instances caused irreversible damage. I'm a proud Democrat, but I feel our local Democrats have been an embarrassment to the party. Backdoor dealing, strongholds on votes and refusals to meet in the middle is not a good look, no matter what your party line is. It's very important that the new council members and returning members of this council remember who they actually work for, the residents, not big business, flashy and/or empty promises made by outsiders. Blindly following the mayor into agreements and/or projects without any care on how it would directly affect residents must stop now. This new council has an opportunity to start fresh, puts silly grievances, grudges aside and stand up for the residents, unite for what is best for the future of the city. Things like increasing our tax base, homeownership, not huge rental units with pilots, youth-centered initiatives and support systems for loyal Uticans should be something everyone in this room is excited about. Those items should never be used to divide this council, instead it should be used to strengthen it. My neighborhood and the surrounding neighborhoods are now at risk of being bulldozed again, literally and figuratively, if the St. East Project is mishandled. I was sad to see that neither Ward Three Council candidate came to my door while campaigning. I was hoping to remind them of the lasting damage Bob De Sanctus did to our neighborhood when he participated in the shady and illegal approval of the Kelberman Center project. So, Mr. Batar, I hope that you will listen to each of these council members. I hope you will come around and speak to your constituents who live in my neighborhood and I hope that you will understand that transient renters and absentee landlords pose a continuous challenge to the people in your ward. I also hope that you will come and listen to our story and understand what actually went wrong and not the politics that people spread around this city. In conclusion, the voters have spoken, they were tired of the antics of the former administration and former councils. If they wanted more of the same, Mike Gleme would not have won by the landslide that he did. Do better for the residents of this city and remember, decisions can impact the residents of this city for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Lindsey. Petitions, remonstrates and appeals, First District, Council Member.
Sorry, thank you.
Katie Ayala?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just, yeah, I want to thank everybody for being here tonight, I'm glad it's a packed house. It's very cool to see the year start off this way and just congratulations to everybody. I'm sure we all share the same sentiment. As always, if people want to get in touch with me, my website is still katieforutica.com, call, text, email, and next Wednesday, we'll be at the West Utica Neighborhood Association Meeting at Five Points, Irish Culture Center, if anybody wants to come and meet with a lot of us one-on-one there. Other than that, looking forward to a good year, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Robert Bremerster?
Thank you, Mr. President, I want to congratulate everybody, we know how much hard work it is to get here. You know, I'm looking forward to a great two years, a lot of changes, a lot of good changes. Again, I want to echo our first West Utica meeting at Five Points next, next Wednesday at six o'clock and thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you. Council Member Joe Beat, Beatar, Third Ward?
Thank you, it's been said a lot already tonight, but congratulations to the other council members, congratulations to the council president and congratulations to the new mayor. I do look forward to working with all of you, the department heads, to make sure that we do come together as a city and those people out there put their faith in us and I want to do my best to make sure that we are moving the city in the right direction. So thank you, members of the public, for coming, thank you to those who are listening on the live stream and I'll always do my best to, to help move our city forward the best we can. So again, congratulations to everyone, thank you all again, thank you.
Thank you. Fourth District, Council Member Frank Carcon?
Thanks, Mr. President. First of all, I'd like to thank the members of the voters of the Fourth Ward for electing me. When I was campaigning, the biggest concern of everybody I talked to was safety. I hope this board, this council can come together and support the police, the firemen and the DVW, not work against them, work with them, to give them what they need to make everything safe because everybody I talked to, their biggest concern was safety, that's my biggest concern. So no matter what party we are, anybody that's concerned is safety, I'd be glad to talk with and thank everybody for letting me talk, thank you.
Thank you. Fifth District, Council Member Venice Irvin?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just like everybody else in other districts, the Cornhill Neighborhood Association meeting will be on, taking place on January sixth, from six to seven thirty and I think Freddie Hamilton is in the back, she sets it up. We have a nice agenda coming up where we're gonna talk about a lot of different things like we always do and I'd like to say congratulations to all the council members, to Mayor Gleme and thank Mayor Gleme for. and thank Mayor Gleme for actually meeting with a group of people from my district and other districts that did show up to that meeting before he even became mayor, which was a good start to what he was saying about inclusion, inclusion, and making sure all the districts are on an equal scale of getting what we all get together. So I thank him for that. And what else I have, and just Happy New Year, and if anybody in my district needs me, they know where to reach me. I let them know all my information is on City Hall on the website. If anybody wants to talk to me from another district, I'm available, because I talk to anybody and try to help anybody in the city. So give me a call if you need me, and if I don't have an answer, I'll go to somebody that can give you the answers. Thank you.
Thank you. Sixth district council member Joseph Beatrice?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I just wanted to say you're doing a heck of a job up there tonight. So thank you for giving me a chance here. The only thing I got to say is I'm the sixth ward representative, and most people just don't realize that I have two districts in East Utica, and I'm gonna try to focus a lot more on those two districts, so I'm gonna be joining on Tuesday, January ninth, I'm gonna be joining the East Utica meeting, so, and I'll be putting it out on Facebook or emailing out, so anybody in those districts, I believe councilperson Ayala will be there along with LaCresha Hunt, and we're gonna do it January ninth at the Parretta Twin Towers on five oh nine Second Street at six P M. So you guys are welcome, and I still will be having our monthly North Utica meeting along with legislator, what's your name? Yeah, no, we'll be doing that our normal time, Mike Gentile. So we'll be doing that too, but I just want to spend more time in the east end, so, to get with these people, okay? Thanks.
Thank you, council member. Council at large, Chief Mark Williamson?
Chief Mark Williamson? All right, anyways, thank you, Mr. President. I'm not a chief, but.
Master chief.
All right, but anyways. Congrats to Mr. Bitar, Mr. Carcone, Jack, welcome back to the common council. You know, as I go into my eleventh and twelfth year, I've seen it all, and I hope we do get along better, I hope we do things better, I hope that, you know, we do really well with the legislation, no more things getting shoved down our throat. I hope to God that the mayor did not set us up for failure this upcoming year in the budget year, and I hope Mayor Gleme, I hope you can figure that out before, because that budget's coming up soon, and I just hope he didn't do that to us. That's all I have.
Thank you. Council member at large Samantha Calissimo Testa?
I've got nothing this evening, thank you.
Councilman at large, Jack LaMedico?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Mayor, welcome aboard. Fellow council members, congratulations, and most of all to the citizens of Utica, New York, thank you for voting me in. I was voted in by Republicans, I was voted in by Democrats, I was hopefully voted in by maybe working families, I don't know, but I appreciate it, and I'm gonna be working for you, I'm gonna be working for everybody in the city of Utica. I'm gonna be looking to work with the mayor on his vision, I'll be backing the mayor on his vision, and I hope to be here, hear what you're gonna bring to us shortly, and I look forward to a good two years. So thank you, everyone, for coming.
Thank you. We have properties we have to pull out of committee. So we have ordinance number six.
Make a motion to move ordinance, wait, I thought it was four. Ordinance four? For eleven nineteen Stark Street?
It's ordinance number six. Ordinance number four? We have a motion to pull out of the committee? Second? Sale of property eleven nineteen Stark Street to create additional parking for two hundred and fifty dollars, Alana Shamradak, purchased to? Can I have your vote?
Ninety's adopted. Make a motion to move ordinance six for four oh six Blaine Dynasty?
Sale of property four oh six Blaine Dynasty to fence pave for two hundred and fifty dollars to Santa Maribel Garcia Durante. Can I have your votes, please?
Ninety's adopted. Make a motion to move ordinance eight for seven forty-six J Street?
Mr. President?
Yes.
On the past four ordinances, we just gotta make an amendment to the bottom, including, because they were from December twentieth, so they've got to make sure that it says, Bitar, it's gotta be amended at the bottom. Frank DeBry, Jack LaMedico?
Thank you. Sale of property seven forty-six J Street to create additional parking for his adjacent property, two hundred and fifty dollars, Bijro Smaladak. Can I have your votes, please?
Ninety's adopted.
Motion to move ordinance, ordinance ten, one thirty-five Gold Street?
Yep.
Thank you.
Sale of property one thirty-five Gold Street to renovate for primary residence, two hundred and fifty dollars, I mean, twenty-five thousand dollars to Alamar Morda Jose. Can I have your votes, please?
Ninety's adopted.
Ordinance number twelve?
Motion to move ordinance number twelve, fifteen twenty-five Stuben Street?
Thank you. Sale of property fifteen twenty-five Stuben Street to renovate for primary residence, thirty-five thousand dollars to Nabila Carbajal. Can I have your votes, please?
Ninety's adopted.
Is there anything else in committee that you would like to pull? Motion to adjourn? Thank you. Have a good night.